Let me read the emergency evacuation procedures before I call us to order. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm-based sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. With that said, I'll call us to order. You have minutes in your packets from our October 26 meeting. Do I have any corrections or additions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We've got an addition to the agenda tonight. It was omitted, the election of officers. We should have done that last sometime in the previous two months, but since we weren't here. I suggest we add that to, just before we go into hearings and after the site plan. Yes?
Can we also add, under miscellaneous items, proposed amendments to Section 7.101.7 sidewalks?
You want to change the order?
Yeah, it's under long range. If you want to move it up to...
Oh, no, good. Never mind.
Do I have a motion to add the elections to the agenda?
No, may I?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We don't have any public hearings, any public input on items on the agenda. They're being done. We'll move on to site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The application for you for the site plan review is due to the fact that this is a existing nonconforming use. The property is Zoned R1, which is a rural district. The existing land use is commercial. It's currently the site of the Pumpkin Center Motorcycle Resort Campground. We received a building permit application for proposed construction, actually reconstruction, of the bath facility, bath house there at the campground. This property was last before the planning commission in 2006, at which time it came before the commission and granted approval to expand the operation with additional cabins, office space, et cetera. This is just to replace the bath house that was actually lost to fire. And had it been replaced back in the existing footprint, it wouldn't have had to come before this board. But it's a slightly different footprint and in a slightly different location, just off from where it was before. So, as I mentioned, that would have to come before the planning commission for review and approval. Technically, that's considered an expansion of a nonconforming use. That said, the commission has to determine that there's enough space for such an expansion. Staff's opinion that there certainly is. It's more than 10 acres. The proposed location for the bath house is outside of the FEMA flood hazard area that is located on site, so no encroachment there. Environmental health and storm water have already reviewed it and approved the building permit. Still has some outstanding things on the plans review side or the code review side for the building permit itself. But staff would recommend approval of the site plan, subject to the issuance of all those permits.
I see a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Floor is open for nomination of officers. We need to elect a chairman, a vice chair, and by default, a secretary, which normally falls upon Thomas, and a backup secretary. I guess we have, don't we? Didn't we have last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those secretaries, I guess, are split.
So, floor is open for nominations. Chairman, nominated, Stucky for chairman, Daryl Tiplin, vice chairman.
Second.
Third.
All right. Any other nominations?
Closed, all nominations.
All right. Nominations are closed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. You've got to put up with me another year. Can I have a motion on Thomas as secretary and Doug as backup secretary?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. You're elected. All right. Valley Vista lots 4 to 16 off of Cloverhill Ridge. Doug?
Yeah, this is by Pancrat's Construction. 12 lots, four with county road frontage, and eight lots served by two common driveway easements. And there's one detention pond lot. You can see that on the plat. I think we discussed it during preliminary. Outstanding items to be completed are on page three. I'm going to read them into the record. Number one is the completion of the final punch list items supplied to the owner and final staff inspection of all improvements prior to releasing the final plat. I met with Ms. Jason today onsite, and we did our final punch list in the field, and he's completed every item on there, so it is complete. Number two is signature plats, including utilities. And I think we'll probably be able to handle the plats tomorrow if everything else is done. And then, number three is a copy of a notarized POA documents to staff to be recorded with the final plat. And I have those, and I'd also let you know that we all have the, it's in the write-up, but we do have the certification from the project engineer on the detention facilities. So, everything is done.
Any discussion or questions? Commissioner McCullough?
Question, on this Valley Vista Way, I see the 25-foot easement, but outside, like on Lot 5 and over into 6, it's got almost another 30-foot of shaded area. What is that? Is that just a drain? It's not labeled, as I can see.
Yeah, it is labeled, but it's for water, it's water quality treatment area.
I think that's just that little hatched area right there.
No, it's that...
It's everything?
Yeah. It's part of the detention. And actually, the lot's been made bigger to accommodate for it. That is correct, right, Jason?
So, that, the dark area goes all the way, the shading outside of the Valley Vista Way carries it all the way back to the pond detention area?
Well, there's not actually, no, 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 no. There's not a detention pond. It's just an additional easement to carry water.
Okay.
It's part of the overall drainage plan. It doesn't have to necessarily go in a detention facility. Some of the water does, some of it doesn't. It goes to a ditch, goes through a pipe, crosses before a neighbor's property, and then goes into a county ditch. But it's still in the overall drainage plan. That is correct, right, Jason?
Yes, it's a natural low area, right there. That's what's shaded.
That satisfy your question, Bruce? Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion? We have a motion and a second. If there's no more questions or discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Site plan is approved. Reed subdivision of Lot 1, Watershaw.
Yeah, let's see. Reed subdivision, Lot 1, Watershaw subdivision. It's not a concept plan. This is actually a preliminary and final plat. It's by Chris and Randall Evans, who are here tonight, off of Disco Loop Road and Watershaw Drive. There are six lots with county road frontage. You all did look at a concept plan back in April 2017, so it's been quite a while. I am just going to move to the outstanding items to be completed, which are on page six, and I'll discuss the first one a little bit. Outstanding items to be completed. Number one, variance consideration by the planning commission for the number of lots off of Watershaw Drive. There's a whole bunch of information in the staff write-up about that. I mean, it would take a little bit of time to explain it all, but essentially, if you look at the plat with me, item D1, this is all, keep in mind, this is all one tract of land now, and they have access off Watershaw Drive. They legally have access off Watershaw Drive. When they divide it, lots 1R1 and 1R2 are going to both have access either off Watershaw Drive or Disco Loop Road for 1R2, the one that fronts Disco Loop Road. The purpose of the variance, or the reason for the variance is because when they developed Watershaw subdivision, they put a very specific note on the plat, and it was actually in the minutes, like in 1978, of the planning commission. And it said that they didn't want any additional lots in Watershaw at the time. They didn't want anybody to take their lot and re-divide it without the planning commission approving it. Well, a lot of plats start coming in because they were bigger lots in Watershaw, just like this one. And they start cutting up a bunch of lots. So, every time they did that, they went back to the planning commission, and basically on almost every single occasion, except for once, they approved it, and then they just stopped it. You know, back in the 80s, they said, "No more lots on Watershaw." And then, sometime later, someone asked again, and the planning commission approved it again. Last, I think it was last year, in 2015, I think there's one of these drawings has the plat, yeah, the next page shows the number of lots off Watershaw Drive. And you'll see where I have an arrow that says, "Best property was divided by variance" in September of 2015. And from what I can tell, almost every other time, if you look to the left or above, to the north of where it says best, you know, a lot of those lots up there were cut up smaller. And then, some of the ones to the south were, and then the interior lots, you know, were not cut up smaller. That's because these were lake frontage lots, and the value was on the lake. So, anyway, you know, there's just an old plat condition that stated that each time we had to go back to the planning commission and ask for additional lots. I reviewed it with the county engineer. He went out there and looked at it, and he agreed with me that the variance should be granted, so they can have an additional entrance on Watershaw rather than Disco Loop Road. Disco Loop Road is a collector road, and Watershaw is not. It's a local road, and it's a very wide local road. So, we're just asking that the variance be granted for safety reasons, and we're going to not allow a lot, access on Disco Loop for that particular lot. All the rest will have road frontage on Disco Loop. So, having said that, if you have questions, I'll answer them, but I'm going to move on as soon as I find my place. Okay. Back to page six. Item number two is signature plats, including water and electric. Number three, all previous notes for Watershaw subdivision shall be added to the plat. And I supplied that information to the surveyor today, so he's aware of that. And he should be able to pull that old plat from the courthouse records, and then he'll add that note. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner McCullough?
Not that it's that big a deal, but that tax parcel number should be 30.05 in the title block over there on the side. He's got 30.06.
Thank you.
And when they came in for the concept, they mentioned having access to that lake area, reserve lake area that's behind Lot 1R2 for all the lots. Is that just going to be just for that one lot now?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. I didn't hear from you.
In the concept plan, you talked about having access to that reserved area on Fort Loudon Lake for all the lots.
No.
It's not going to be, it's just for...
I don't have an intention.
Okay, so it's just...
I don't know where that came from. That presents a logistical problem, problem of the lots. So, that access would go to Lot 7, as it's shown there.
Got you.
That's really not a good, if you look at that in person out there, you see that that code is actually a summer pool code, and whenever they draw it down, there's a mud flat in there, plus the fact that that's owned by Covington. And they own a little strip between the water and that little property line on Lot 1. So, they'll never have access in there too there. And that access there basically doesn't give any shoreline to it. Lynn Black is Lot 2 there. She's got that shoreline pretty well taken out of the docks and boat out and so forth. That was an early thing, that the early developers thought maybe that that might be good to have, but I just, I see it as liability more than asset. But it will go to Lot 7 if it's approved. If Lot 7 is approved, that's why it will go to there.
Everybody understand the purpose of the variance? Make a motion to approve. I have a motion and a second to approve recommendations of, or the outstanding items to be completed and approval of the variance. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The site plan as presented is approved, subject, including the variance, to the entrance on Watershaw.
Okay, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that mean that this final plat is approved, or does that just preliminary?
That's preliminary and final.
Preliminary and final, something, so basically the paperwork.
Okay, okay. And does that also include seven lots or six lots?
Seven lots.
Seven lots, okay. It's a little bit hard to hear with those volumes down a bit.
Yeah, and the environmental health department will have to do their final review on it, so it's subject to them. I mean, we think there's going to be seven lots, but if there was an issue with it, it would be because of that.
Let me also say something here, too. So, if you don't think that I've found a pull one over on the planning commission. When we first admitted for the concept plan, we did not have a topographical survey of the property. We thought that that depression there was farther, closer to Disco Loop Road than what it is. Once we got the TOPA, then we decided that discovered that it was farther away, and so we see enough leveled area right there in order to present a lot. And so, that was the reason why we went ahead and asked for another lot.
Yeah, and both of them...
We were trying to get away from it.
So, you're talking about Lot 1R1?
No, Lot 1R2.
It's both of them, actually.
That was one lot before, and...
It's a point of lot, and that was one I... Once we found out that there was enough level land there to present a building size, that's why we asked for another lot. We weren't trying to get away from it.
They meet our criteria for minimum lot size with area, you know, that's impacted.
Outside, right.
They're still large enough.
Good. Thank you. All right. Miscellaneous items. Proposed amendment. Wait a minute. About long. I'm sorry. Got to change memos here. Long-range discussion and possible action on zoning resolution, Section 9.1, Planned Rural Resort District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, Commissioner Allen couldn't be here tonight, but he, just to give you just a little bit of background, which is about all I got, but he came, sat down with us, I want to say earlier this month, and proposed this change and asked staff to draft up the resolution accordingly, which is included. The meat of it is to sort of pare back some of the specific requirements of the Planned Rural Resort District, especially the ones that had to do with location of the district. And if you look at the markup, you'll see that, basically, it cuts out the part, when the district was originally drafted, it talked about the rural gateway, it talked about the smoky part. And the specific thing was that for initial application, the area was limited to land adjacent to or directly accessible from Wes Miller's Cove. And so, this resolution, or this amendment, rather, would take that out. What does that mean? Well, in theory, it opens this up to other parts of the county. And for all practical matters, each property would still be subject to review, still have to come before this board and the county commission to determine if the property is, you know, if it's something that this would be appropriate for. All of the size requirements and the site plan requirements, basically, more or less a planned unit development, that's still enforced, so it still has to be a 40-acre minimum property, still has to be under common ownership, still has to be common unified theme of design and plan. So, there it is. If, again, I wish Commissioner Allen could be here, but if the board is so inclined, the appropriate action would be to forward this on to the county commission for them to set a public hearing and go from there. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. I think this originally came about when, if I remember correctly, it was when BlackBerry was trying to establish their rural district out there, so. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or discussion? All right, the motion is then to send Section 9.1, Planned Rural Resort District, as modified in your paperwork in front of you, onto the planning commission with recommendation for adoption. It is fully under the purview of the county commission. They will have to have a public hearing on it and then act accordingly. With that said, do all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Tell me if you can carry it on to the county commission for us. Plan, excuse me. Item two, long range, is subdivision regulations, Section 7.01.7 sidewalks. You have a memo.
Yeah, you ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This item is for discussion and possible action, but it's to the planning commission only. This is not, does not go to the county commission. I just want to let you know that. And if you'll look at the memo on the top, it says draft three. We've been working on this for quite a while, so if you do, if you want us to revise it any way, we will, but, you know, we've worked on it for a while. Basically, I'm going to try to summarize what we're doing here. You'll see that we're removing Section 7.01.7 entirely, and that's our current sidewalk requirements for regulations, in the subdivision regulations. If you're going to build a subdivision and you want to put sidewalks in, then this section is what you currently are bound by. And it also says what the planning commission, when they can require, or they don't require, and when they can request them. We're going to replace it with a new section, and we've gone over this a couple times, and I hesitate to go through the whole thing, but I would like to say that the major change is that our current regulations, because of the situation at the highway department at the time, state that if you want to put in sidewalks, the developer wishes to put in sidewalks, they can do so, but they have to reduce the right-of-way, and the sidewalks are contained in a private easement, which is maintained by the property owners association. The main change of the regulations is actually putting standards in for what a sidewalk should look like, how they should build it, is the difference that the highway department and the highway superintendent will now accept them in the right-of-way, which is a more natural place to put a public improvement instead of in an easement. Now, you can have walkways and easements and backyards and trails and so forth, but a typical sidewalk that you identify with a curb street or behind a ditch in a subdivision without curbs, you know, is usually a public improvement. And the superintendent, you know, is supportive of changing the regulation to allow it in the right-of-way, and then the maintenance responsibility over time would become the county's and not a property owners association. So, that is the main difference. And we're also adding things that we need, like ADA requirements for handicap people, and then just a basic standard. And we're also telling developers that if you put it in, we want it in all at the same time, just like a road, and we want conduit under it, and then you cross your driveway with an existing sidewalk. You make your driveway match up with the sidewalk, because we don't want them to piecemeal them into subdivisions, and we don't want them cut up every time they put a new driveway in, just, because then you have a hopscotch driveway, I mean sidewalk, and, you know, there could be some liability if it's not built to one standard. So, that's what the regulation intends to do. I think I've represented the superintendent, but he's here. If you have any questions for him, and, you know, we are recommended for the change, the wholesale change. Take the section out, add the section. Unless you all want to go a different direction.
Superintendent, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an effort to standardize what you see all over cities and counties, and to make developments in the county, if they so desire to use a sidewalk, to have the curb, two-foot grass strip, the sidewalk, and then the rest of the lot, instead of, if they did a sidewalk all the way up in the lot, which doesn't look good, and nobody's really going to do. So, I think at the end of the day, going forward, we have a better product for county subdivisions and developments. I just, I think it's a good thing to do.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any comments or discussion?
Question, just, was this a mandate that came from somewhere across the state? Because this month, this has been Nashville's agendas and Knoxville's, and I just wondered if that's some kind of mandate all of a sudden.
No, sir.
And then, back to what Doug said about putting the sidewalk in first, and then when you cut a driveway, you're not going to, you're going to truck up that six-inch curbs height and not disturb the sidewalk? Is that what you just said?
You're going to have to make your driveway match up to the sidewalk instead of...
Yeah.
Is that not going to be difficult in two feet from the curb?
Actually, it's the best way to do it, because if you don't do that sidewalk at the time of the development, the elevations tend to change, whoever the builder is, or you just end up with a hodgepodge of elevations of a sidewalk versus cut. And of course, now we have what we call a right-of-way permit, so we'll have somebody that'll go out and inspect when they cut their driveway in, so they're not going to be put in, you know, the weird water could flow across, and we're going to have that two inch.
It just looks me like within the two feet from the edge of pavement to where the sidewalk is going to be, where the five-foot sidewalk is, you've got a, it's got a bump there you're going to hit as soon as you go in your driveway.
Well, that curb that we're allowing now will blend right into that, and then you'll have the driveway and the sidewalk that'll blend in as well. That's, and that's pretty standard over the years, the way Mayor Alcoa and Knoxville have done.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add just a couple of things real quick. I don't, I don't think we mentioned this, but I think it's important to put on record that it's clear that this doesn't make sidewalks a mandatory installation by developers. It's still optional, and some developers want to do it. It's just, it's just going to standardize it. What was already in the regulations, that we've tweaked just a little bit, is this body can require sidewalks right in the planning regions if they so desired, if you wanted to do that. But Doug doesn't know of any time that that's ever happened. So, I just wanted to make it clear that this isn't making sidewalks mandatory.
That was the first thing I looked for when I saw the...
Fair enough. And to answer his question, I think why this, things similar to this have come up in Nashville and Knoxville and so on over the last few months, isn't because of sidewalks, but it is because of ADA accessibility. DOT has recently started to, DOT is sort of the federal government's arm when it comes to handing out money to the counties and cities, or at least where a big portion of it comes from. And Americans with Disabilities Act is now 20, 30 years old, and DOT is getting really serious about making sure that the provisions of ADA are being followed and being implemented by cities and counties, and, you know, that money stream may get cut off at some point as far as federal transportation money and stuff like that. So, DOT is really pushing for compliance, and that may be why you've seen things similar to this on those agendas recently. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd seen some articles in the paper stating that some money was subject to being cut off if some ADA... subject to being cut off if some ADA standards were not met in this, this area, because I was questioning in my own mind. I'd seen sidewalk cuts being made in Alcoa, and they were doing a lot of repairs at corners to make, bring them up to ADA standards, so.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I add one thing to that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Please. And the other thing is, everything's trending toward walkability, and, you know, let's face it, Blount County's a great place. We've got a lot of people coming here, and I'd like to just see us up with the times, up with, that's the trend, walkability, and have first-class subdivisions and developments.
I brought up a tension one last minute. Thomas, did bring it up. You know, the planning commission previously, in, apparently in the regulations, has the option to wire sidewalks when they need them necessary, even a mile in school, and we changed that to a, a half a mile of the urban growth battery of the cities, which makes a lot more sense. Because a lot of schools, like in Wallen, you know, you might have a sidewalk kind of nowhere, but, you know, the idea that these are more, you're more, more common in an urban setting than they are in a truly rural setting, but we've loudly developed the option to put them in a subdivision.
Sure.
But I just wanted to clarify that we made that change, too, and I think it's a smart change.
If we approve this tonight, then public hearing will have to be set for, for public input and discussion, because it is a modification to the subdivision regulations, which fall under the purview of the planning commission, so there will be a, a follow-on activity before it actually goes into effect.
We'll have to look at the timing of that and as far as the legal notification and stuff. Hopefully, we can do it next month. If not, it'd be the month following, but, but basically, this board would need to call to set the public hearing, and then we'll do that as quickly as possible.
So unless you, unless there are some specific modifications to the, what the staff has developed here, the motion would be appropriate to set, to go ahead and draft in the form of regular, subdivision modifications, which it really is close, but to set public hearing for the next action step. Do I have a motion? If not, do I have some modifications? Go ahead. So moved? Do I have a sub, a second? And a second. If there's no further discussion, then I'll ask, request staff look at the calendar and set the next step for a public hearing on modification to the subdivision regulations. Staff reports. All those in favor, I better get a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Marlene. I'm a railroad train tonight, locomotive. Staff reports.
I had just one thing that Marlene handed me right before the meeting. Just wanted to remind you all that statement of disclosure form by the state, that is due by January 31st, and as planning commissioners, you all have to do that. Marlene's got the information if you don't already, and thank you.
Yeah, it's easy to do online if you just, once you get your account set up with the state, it's pretty.
Not currently. Not currently. I'll do that tomorrow. I hear they're receiving that from managers.
All right. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, we are adjourned.